Good morning. It's nine o'clock and I'll call to order the June 21st meeting of the Slayne County Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Mr. Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Now, if we could all stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move into our citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government business, usually limited to three minutes and for items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of disposition of property, approval of contracts, approval of payroll as presented, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Any commissioners wish to amend or change the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second. We approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Now move into presentations. Item number one.
Employee retirement recognition with Jamie Doss, county clerk.
All right, Jamie.
So today, I get the honor and to not only congratulate Jody on her retirement, but also thank her for everything that she's done for Slayne County. She's served our county for over forty-five plus years, has done a wonderful job. To me, when you think of the clerk's office, Jody is the face. I mean, that's the first person that people see. She's always friendly. She's always dedicated to helping others. And for the last eleven years that I worked closely with her, she's also helped keep me in line with the hundred and fifty-plus election workers in all of our polling places. She does an awesome job taking care of all of that. So I just wanted to give her this and say thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's truly amazing, Jody, and to say how deeply the commission appreciates forty-five years of service. It's outstanding. So congratulations and enjoy your retirement. I believe it's Friday, your last day?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a meet and greet two to four?
Yes, we'll be having a party from two to four in our office.
Very good. All right, we'll move on.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I'll try to keep it sane here, okay? No, it's been a pleasure seeing your smiling face every time I walk by, whether you're sitting there or whatever. It's been awesome. And it's been twenty-one plus years that I've got to enjoy your smiles and personality. So thanks again.
It's been a, and I'll just say, it's like coming to the courthouse for, you know, forty years, thirty years. It's like it's been, you've always been there and it's, I don't care what department you're in, you've always been a smiling face. You've always been a welcome, welcome to the county courthouse. So thank you for all your years of service and we're really going to miss you. So anyway, have a great time. Enjoy life now.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to action items. Item number one.
RFA 159-22, fiscal year twenty-three, State of Kansas awarded allocation for enhanced employee salaries with Annie Grievous, committee corrections director.
Morning, Annie.
Good morning.
I'm here because back in FY21, statewide supervision agencies, court services, and parole received enhanced allocations for their staff salaries. Community Corrections was not included in that action. Those departments, Department of Corrections and OJA, got the governor and the legislators to approve that. And when we found out later that that was done and we spoke to our personal legislators and legislators across the state of Kansas, they did not know that community corrections was not included in that. So that was not the original intent, hearing from legislators, but neither the, nevertheless, community corrections did not receive those enhancements. During FY2, community corrections directors and agency staff, because we lobby for ourselves and we have to write grants for our dollars that we get or make special requests, spent the last year in Topeka many times, testifying at legislative hearings, speaking to the governor's office, writing letters, hosting our own local legislators, doing whatever we could across the state of Kansas to get that information out that we were not part of that salary enhancement and that community corrections is so different than most county agencies and most supervision agencies across the state of Kansas in that we write grants and have to receive those dollars outside of the norm. And so we did that. In addition to that, we completed a salary study and a survey for all community corrections agencies across the state and, as I said, appeared frequently in Topeka. I got very well-known with this, running down, up and down those steps this year again and taking Michelle and several other staff of ours going around, looking for those enhanced salary dollar support. Throughout that whole year, we kept the HR, Marilyn Lemer, and our county administrator, Phil Smith Haynes, a prize of all the efforts and where we were and as we moved along. Effective on July 1st of 2022, the governor did award a statewide allocation of enhanced dollars from the state general fund in the amount of eight point four million to community corrections across the state of Kansas for the purposes of salary alignment with all supervision agencies. Again, that's our counterparts, community, or court services and state parole all across the state of Kansas. This agency alone received a hundred and fourteen thousand, twelve dollars and seventy-six cents for our adult program and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and eleven cents for our juvenile program. The allocation in the governor's own budget writing is only to be used for existing staff enhancements. We had gone up asking for more staff. My agency alone in the salary study is short seven staff. The but, the governor did not support that. She only allowed the support of existing staff to receive the enhancement salaries to align us with other supervision agencies across the state of Kansas. So in her budget document, and I believe I attached it to the packet, it's very clear that those dollars must be used for existing staff enhancement salary dollars. And should you not use those, we will lose those at the end of the year. Or actually, you won't be funded whatever amount you didn't use into FY24. I think I'm saying that right. So, and I say that, yes, so at the beginning of FY24. So I'm seeking approval and asking the county commission to approve utilizing the specific enhanced allocation effective July 1st, 2022, to existing FTEs with the agency. Please see this attached spreadsheet. I did put it in there. It can be confusing and I understand that because we've done it and redone that many, many times. And I want to thank Sherri Kraus in my office for letting me scratch all over it and start over and do that many times throughout the last several months. She was very helpful in that process. In that spreadsheet, we're utilizing a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and seven cents for the adult salaries and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents for juvenile, completed by the staff, keeping in line with the salaries of statewide supervision agencies. But we also imitated most of what the WSU survey showed the Slayne County commissioners. And we also were very cognizant to keep it on the county pay plan. We did not want to be disruptive to the county. We did not want to overlook the WSU study. We wanted to try to align ourselves as close to what we think will be happening in January for all other county agencies because we remain on the county pay plan. So when I say Sherri spent a lot of time, she really did, to look at everything and making sure we aligned those in there. Doing that, we left fifteen thousand dollars on the table. We're going to lose fifteen thousand. It just did not work to use everything the governor was awarding us and keeping us in the WSU study and in the county pay plan. So we will automatically lose fifteen thousand just by doing it the way we did do it. But I think that's an effective, efficient way of doing those salaries. We need to remember that Slayne and Ottawa County cover the three pre-trial staff. So between your commission and Ottawa County Commission, three of those employee salary dollars, and out of this amount, that being twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, is Slayne County's responsibility and nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents is Ottawa County's responsibility. And that is on the spreadsheet provided to you. And that is important to note that neither county has those budgeted in the current dollars, and I'm aware of that. So I want to make sure that you know we're aware of that. And we do offer an alternative to that, although that's not my top choice of what I'm asking you to approve. So the alternatives for action are approve what I've just explained, or have Annie explain it six or seven times, and I'd be happy to because I know it's a lot. Approve community corrections to utilize the statewide allocation of enhancement dollars for the purposes of salary alignment. And that are pre-trial program dollars. Instead of coming out of Ottawa and Slayne County budgets, the current year budgets, we would take those dollars out of our reimbursement dollars. And that would come in the amount of sixteen or twelve, thirteen thousand, something like that. And we would take that out of that and fund those three positions for six months ourselves. And then asking that Slayne and Ottawa County pick those up in Janu, or Janu, January. I'm sorry. I had a wedding this weekend and I am not all put together. And it wasn't my wedding before you say anything. It was not me. So January of twenty-three, asking that the counties pick that salary up then. Marilyn and Phil put in the alternative number three. I'm not going to say I support this. I think it, I think it's an alternative to consider if we consider that this will make morale better for all other county employees because they're not getting early enhancements. I'm hoping that you, as a commission, decide to follow the WSU study and look at it seriously because I've spent a lot of time looking at it. And there are positions in there that are not awarded any increase. And I think that's a morale issue, too. I think there's a lot of morale issues in this whole, when you're talking about people's salaries, morale comes up, no matter what you do. So I understand that. But Phil and Marilyn thought a way, I think, to reduce maybe some of the bad morale of other county staff was to take away all the community corrections, ARPA, one-time inflation adjustment payment to community corrections that's coming in July. Again, I don't support this action. It's in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars. And you, as a county, could save thirty-seven thousand dollars in ARPA funds if you decided that community corrections is getting enhanced salary dollars earlier than other county employees. And you feel like that might be a better way to show that you support those other county employees also. So that is also an opportunity. Or you can deny the request altogether. We recommend that community corrections that you approve the requests and allow those dollars to be utilized effective July 1st. We are hoping that you'll consider that seriously. The budget impact, of course, number one, as I said earlier, Slayne and Ottawa County do not have those dollars in the current year. And so you could allocate, or request that community corrections or approve that community corrections use that money to pay the three pre-trial officers out of the reimbursements for the first, or the last six months of the year. And then you pick it up at that point. Or you could approve and find those dollars and pay for the pre-trial. So those are the two budget impacts to Slayne County. And I'm happy for all your questions.
Mr. Chair, you mentioned three options, alternatives, and you mentioned administrator and HR. I don't see there the third option.
That's the third one that's on here. Under alternatives of action, number three is the one that the HR director and the county administrator came up with. And it was added into, under number two alternatives of action, there's three or four listed, and they're number three. Do you have that?
No.
Oh?
Yeah, yeah, you do. Right at the very bottom there, number three.
Oh, I apologize.
You are fine. Maybe you were at that wedding with me. I don't know.
We have obviously not approved the WSU study for county staff. Would this be premature to do it?
It looks like that question might have been directed at me. Yes, this is absolutely premature. The state has not given us any good options. Annie and I have had extensive, as she said, we've had extensive discussions about this over time. We were hopeful that the governor would allow some of these funds to be used for other staff. We were hopeful that maybe this could be used in the form of a one-time bonus. We were hopeful that many other things could be possibilities. And the guidance that the community corrections has received from the State Department of Corrections is no, 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 no. Spend it or we'll take it from you next year. So it's absolutely premature, but there are no good alternatives. And thank you, State of Kansas.
That was going to be my comment. This looks, you know, you like to work with win-win deals, and this looks like a lose-lose to me. I mean, I just, for the reasons that he just kind of stated. My question, the agency received a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the adult program, seventy-six thousand dollars for the juvenile. Is this sort of like when you need grant approvals, you need our approval to accept the grant? Do you need, you need our approval to say, yeah, we want to take the state's money and pay these people?
What I need from you isn't that we necessarily accept the money, but that you put it in salaries. Because if you don't put it in salaries, we'll lose it.
Okay.
And here's my concern is if you choose not to adopt this, then we won't have it. So if you do adopt the WSU study, community corrections may not have the money to go and pay for it. So community corrections at that time would not be allowed to advance into a pay plan or a WSU study or anything else because we won't have the money.
Okay.
The money is approved if you use it.
I, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I, I can't explain this to, you know, thirty-five years working with the Department of Corrections and the governor's office and being our own lobbyist and our own grassroots ways, we're the only, we have to support our own agencies. And unfortunately, we asked for different ways. We presented many, many options to legislators and got what we got. I'm grateful to the governor's office and I'm grateful to our legislators. We spent a lot of time with them over the last year. But this wasn't exactly the ideal. But the state of Kansas has always been the way it is. And I don't know how to, you're not going to change it. I realize that, so.
Going on to the other part of this, and that is the twelve thousand dollars for the three pre-trial. I find it difficult to, and I'm sorry, to give the money to the three pre-trial. Now we've got two hundred and ninety-seven other employees who are not going to be getting that raise. And I, you know, that's, that's the difficult part for me. Not treating all the, all the employees the same. I mean, if they're going to have to wait for their, everybody's going to get this ARPA-funded, it's not a bonus, it's a dispersal of funds coming up in July. Everyone's going to get that. So, but to give the pre-trial employees the advanced raise, six months ahead of the others, is a difficult decision for me to say yes for.
And I, if you look, that's why I gave an option to not use county dollars and use community corrections dollars out of our reimbursement dollars. I cannot use these salary funds because they are county-paid staff. I have to find other means. But I do have a resource in our reimbursement dollars to pay those three, that salary for three months until the county could possibly pick it up in January. So I do offer a solution to that. It may not be a good solution for everybody, but it is a solution.
Would that solution apply to other departments, Phil? If they were to decide, well, we don't want to spend all this money, we're just going to put it into our employees for this department? Is that a logical question? Or, that's what it seems like to me.
The reimbursement dollars are specific to community corrections. They are, and Annie can correct me on this, but these are funds that community corrections has received in past years and not expended and been allowed to keep by presenting a plan to the state. And Annie brings that to her advisory committee and to you each year before she submits that to the state.
Right.
Those can be modified and she could use them in different ways. This is one possible way. But those dollars are not available for other departments because they're specific to community corrections.
Annie, how time-sensitive is, are you in needing a decision here from the board?
Well, this becomes effective July 1. Our fiscal year begins July 1. So, I mean, if you tell me you want to table it and we're going to look at it July whatever, then that's what will happen. We just need to remember that every day after July 1, we don't utilize the dollars. We lose the dollars. We lose a portion. For every day you don't use them, you lose them. Does that make sense?
I will say, and I agree with what Annie just stated, but the way, the way the payroll periods fall and when the state is likely to do their reimbursement and when we need to have payroll, I think it would be possible to delay this to the 12th. But anything beyond that, I, I think it's like you start losing money.
Well, I just really struggle with the fact that we have yet to address WSU conversation in our budget. And I don't know how that's going to flesh out as a commission.
I understand.
And if, if, if we would have a better idea of that before the 12th and could still act on this, I don't know.
I'd like to say something. I mean, just, just a quick thought is that I know for years that the community corrections has been under, underpaid compared to other correction officers in the state. And they fought and fought for years. But now the state has given them the funds to get it there, no matter what the WSU does, since they're funded by their grant monies and their stuff. I, I don't feel like it's really the county budget money that's going in to pay their salaries because it's really from the state. And I would, I would personally, I'd hate to see us bypass the, no matter what we decide on the Wichita State deal for rest of the county. I feel since the state is giving community corrections the money to raise their salaries to where they need to be, and I think that we ought to utilize that and not let it go by the wayside. And I know the timeframe is terrible. Everything else about it is terrible. But for them to get this funding, it's just like rest of the county and all these other ARPA funds that we've got. It's helped a lot of things out, but we didn't have before and it didn't come out of our budget. I feel that this is kind of the same thing here that the state has given to the community corrections. It's funding here that's possible for them to get up to match other community correction people. So, but that's kind of my thought on the issue. So.
Why, you make good points. But I appreciate that. I just, I would like to see that WSU part of it just taken out of this thing because it just, it's going to create morale problems. I mean, that's just, I mean, she mentioned that. And if somebody gets a raise tied to the WSU study as opposed to just a raise from the state, this is sending a, this is sending a message to the other employees that we're okay, that we're okay with the WSU study. And we might be. And we might be.
Yes.
But we haven't seen the budget yet. We don't know how, what the impact's gonna be in, so.
Can I respond to that, Commissioner Shadwick?
Certainly.
We, only our agency brought it into the WSU study because we are hopeful that you will also approve that for all county staff. I think it's important. I mentioned my 35 years here. I can tell you that salary issues and morale have been issues for a long time. It doesn't, you know, I can tell you that, but it doesn't matter. But, so we brought the WSU study in with hopes that you do approve it. We aren't saying you've approved it. We aren't even, we did that as hopes that you would see that. We tried to allow you to understand that we understand we're county employees. We're funded differently, and we have to go out and do different actions. But we consider ourselves, and we're proud to be a part of the county and want to be a part of the county pay plan. So we did that to hopefully make it easier in accepting this. I can redo this entire RFA, take out WSU, and never mention that again as far as I'm concerned.
It's already out there.
Right, it is. I get what you're saying. I guess I, maybe I should have reached out in a different way and asked for different advice. I thought we were making the right decision, and if it was a wrong decision, I apologize to my staff. They put a lot of hope on me accomplishing this before I leave July 8, so I apologize.
I guess I get confused, continually confused because of the fact that you're funded by the state, your employees are funded by the state. And, and from that viewpoint, I would be in favor of doing, of allowing them to accept this money. I'm not in favor of the pretrial, and I'm sorry that that's the way it is, but we have another 297 employees that we have to, to be concerned about.
And Commissioner Vidrickson?
And I don't, now, maybe somebody can correct me here, because this is where I get lost. Why would we turn down this 114 and $76,000? And I agree, not compare it to the, to the WSU. It has nothing to do with the WSU study. It has nothing to do with our other employees, this part of it. It has to do with the funding that comes from the state that's available to you. Why would we say no? That, that would be my question. Why would we say no to that portion of it?
I agree.
And I appreciate that. And, and again, WSU study, my fault. The other issue is we did give an alternative because I know the county didn't budget for this, and I know things are tight. We will take that money for the three pretrial agencies or three pretrial officers, at least for the first six months, which will be July through January to January, and pay that out of reimbursement dollars. Because I know that that's not allocated in your budget. I get that.
Well, and they are, and it's not like they're gonna get, they're gonna get this 2.9% pay adjustment, or whatever we're calling that, in July.
Right.
They're gonna get that.
Right.
Just like every other employee is going to get that. But I, this is, this is a two-part deal here for me.
And, and really, Mr. Vidrickson, I, I, that's where I look at the option, too, is where we approve, we approve them getting the funds, and then community corrections pays for that 13,000 out of their reimbursement funds. That way the county's not, nothing's on us, really. They're taking care of it all. But they get the money.
I think we're all in agreement that we need to accept the money. Or maybe not everybody.
That part of it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And it needs to go, and it needs to go to salaries, and I'm fine with that, too.
And then let them get their $13,000 out of their reimbursement funds.
Annie?
Yes, sir.
Is your replacement on, on board? She's gonna inherit this, whatever action we do.
She is on board. She went terrible to speak with me and met with legislators many, many times. And as you see her smiling face right behind me, she is on board fully. And she will carry the torch well.
I hate this use-it-or-lose-it mentality, but I think this is one of those that we probably need to do.
I agree, thank you.
Well, we've discussed this quite a bit. Does anyone want to choose from one of our actions and make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Is there any public comment before we go ahead? I don't know if we have anyone up there.
Mr. Chair, I would move we approve the request as presented by the community correction staff.
Number one, is what you're saying? Because we looked at alternative for actions, number two also.
And three.
Which I'm in favor of. Is that Commissioner Vidrickson and Commissioner Sparks? Is that kind of your thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't want to sit...
No, I think it, I, I don't think we want to go with number one.
No, I'm, I'm in favor of number two, so, but that's, that's my, my recommendation.
We're working the, the motion here.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I'm just saying I don't want to second that because that's not what I want.
Nor me.
That's why I questioned what that motion was. Did you, did you phrase that in a...
Thank you, Commissioner Shadwick.
Yeah, there's three, three alternatives there.
You, you, you go ahead and phrase it correctly, if you would, please.
Can we do that?
It died for lack of a second.
Yeah, died for lack of a second, yeah.
Okay. We have no second on that motion. Does anyone else want to give this a try and give us another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve community corrections to utilize the statewide allocation of enhanced dollars for the purpose of salary alignment with all supervision agencies across Kansas with community corrections funding pile. Staff within the agency reimbursements for July 22, 23. Celine and Ottawa County pick up those pretrial programs, staff salary enhancements effective July 23. That's not it. That's not the one I want.
Second.
No, I said that's not the one I want. I, see, and I was thinking that was...
You just made a motion.
Yes, but I was reading it, yes. But then as soon as I got to that part, because I do not want Celine and Ottawa County to pick up those pretrial programs, so, lack a table. This is getting...
All right, we, we need to have a little more, a little more clarification here. Here a second on that.
No.
No.
There, there was no motion there because he says, I do not approve of this. I do not make this motion.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, let's, let's regroup here. Commissioner Sparks, I, I thought you were for community corrections picking up the first half of that and then the county doing the second half. Is that not...
What I'm in favor of is the community corrections getting this funds for the deal, and then community corrections getting, paying for those pretrial, that $13,000 out of their reimbursement funds.
Right, and that's for, that's up until January of '23.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what you just read.
Pretrial program self-enhancements effective January 23.
Mr. Chair, could we get our administrator to chime in? He's...
All right, Philip, can you help us out here?
Well, I think we need to say one, two, or three, or four. That's what we need to do.
And two is exactly the way I read it, but when I was reading it, then it come out different than what I was reading, knowing that that's what I wanted. But then when I read it out loud, then it didn't seem like that's where I was at. Sorry, I apologize.
That's fine.
If we go with option number two, that means that we're gonna accept the funding, the pretrial program will be paid from the reimbursement funds. Am I correct?
For the first six months, yes.
For the first six months. Roger's issue is that we pick it up after that. What, I mean, what if we say no to that, picking it up after that? What, what does that mean? Do they, do they go backwards in salary then, or what?
That's not, yeah, I'm not sure how that would be a viable option, honestly. I think, um, there, yeah.
Well, that's the portion that Roger's opposed to, is to pick up those pretrial program staff salary enhancements effective January 2023.
Yeah, no, I'm, okay.
Verbalize that again, Commissioner Sparks. What do you...
I, I'm, I'm in favor of number two. The way it reads, right now, I'm just gonna say, because when I read that, I, I did not read it, when I was reading it out loud the second time, when it says enhancements effective January 2023, that's when we would take over that anyway. So between now and then, I want her to pay for it out of her reimbursement.
All right.
And that's what this pretty much says.
Are you clear with him now, Commissioner Vidrickson?
I can read.
I, I know, I know we can read this. We, we read it, and then we didn't like it, and, but it was what we wanted, so we're back to square one here.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would ask, is, is there a motion on the table, or do you, would like me to make it? Because he...
No, let's...
Okay, I, Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt alternative for action number two as presented by Annie Grievous.
Second.
All right, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 159-22, alternative number two for State of Kansas awarded allocation of enhanced employee salaries. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Woo, can we do one of those? Thank you. Appreciate it very, very much.
No, that's, that's fine. All right, Jamie, let's go on to item number two.
RFA 160-22 Safer and Healthier Grant Awards with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is the grant awards for the ARPA dollars for public safety, criminal justice, and community mental health. The commission approved going forward with these awards and allocated $250,000 to this project. We received a total of five awards. One, because of a technical error, was submitted a bit late, but did receive a total of five requests. That total just a few dollars over $250,000, if we considered all of them. Convened a panel of folks from outside the community to review these, so there would not be any, you know, local bias on any of these awards. And that committee was pretty unanimous that the top four awards got really strong scores. That fifth one, which happened to be the one that got submitted a little late, it did not contain a match, and it did not contain letters of support. And so there was a significant break in scores, and the committee was on the fence about whether to award that or not. In view of the discussion of this commission last Tuesday about wanting to free up funding, ARPA funding for the courtrooms, it's my recommendation at this time that we go ahead and award the top four, which would be a total of $210,120, and that would free up the $39,880 that we had originally allocated to go towards something else such as the courtrooms. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions of the administrator? And questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve award of the four grants in the amount of $210,120 and direct staff to return with grant applications.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 160-22 Safer and Healthier Grants Award. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Item number three.
RFA 156-22 ARPA Funding with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So first, I would ask if the commission wishes to untable this item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, we untable RFA 156-22 ARPA funding. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There we go.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we discussed this last Tuesday, and at that time, commissioners asked if I could come back with a different plan. And so I have prepared a supplemental report for today with that different plan. And so the plan, as outlined, would allow us to continue doing what we intended to do with the ARPA funding, but do a little less of it in terms of the projects that have not yet been awarded, and take all of that remaining funding and put it toward the courtrooms. If you do that, you get a total of just slightly over 2.2 million. I think it's like $2,202,000 and change that would go toward a potential courtroom remodel on the third floor. And so that's what I've got for you today as a supplemental item, and I'd be happy to go through any of that in more detail, or if, if you don't like that and want me to take a third stab at it, please let me know.
I guess the 2.2 million, do we have some preliminary numbers on what, and that's where this is kind of a guideline?
The ballpark is 3 million. So I was shooting for 3.2, just to have a little bit of contingency. And so this would be 2.2 from ARPA and 1 million from capital improvements. And that would leave us another million five in capital improvements that the commission had talked about last week, leaving that out there so we could do things in the future.
The additional capital improvement money would come from the allocation of the 2023 budget? Is that correct?
It's, so this is money that's actually in the capital improvement fund already. So it would not be contingent upon the 2023 budget. We will, when we discuss that, there will be additional money budgeted to allocate into capital.
And currently on our capital improvement budget, we have, how much money approximately?
Six-ish million, right around that. But most of that is, is spoken for, for expo or for different projects. The biggest, significant money that we don't have allocated is money that was supposed to go to repairs at the current jail that will now not be needed for that since we're building the new facility. And we have also the expenses for that that we could go back and reclaim from the bond.
And that number is what, though? That's the number I'm trying to get at.
So the expenses that we could go back and reclaim from the bond is 2.5 million.
I think both of you and I showed concerns last week that we didn't want to tie our hands on any future projects, and I think the county administrators come up with it.
And, yeah, and that's, I'm keep trying to, you know...
Wrap it around you, yeah.
Yeah, put some chocolate with this pill I'm swallowing, so.
Well, I want to thank you for all the extra work, at least, on my behalf. I mean, I, I think you've come up with a great plan and took our direction from last week, and just want to thank you for that.
I'd like to say that whittling on the ARPA funding, I think the winner is gonna be the Celine County taxpayer, because that ARPA funds is now gonna offset costs that they would have incurred to do this expensive remodel. And so I think, I think the county residents are the, are the winner here, and I appreciate your work on it also.
We always like that free money.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
I'm sorry.
You have an answer?
Public comment?
Yeah. Do we have any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve award of the four grants in the amount of $210,120. And am I on the, I'm on the wrong one?
Yeah, item number three.
Mr. Chairman, I move we untable. We've already done that. But I move that we approve RFA 156-22, 22 ARPA funding.
Second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 156-22 ARPA funding. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And Phil, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
All right, we'll move into informational items.
County Administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Just a note about upcoming Commission meetings. We have two study sessions coming up, both of which will be next door in Room 107B. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll be discussing more of the topic that we were just on about a potential courtroom remodel. And then next Tuesday, we'll have quite an extensive budget discussion for 2023. We will not be meeting on July 5. You all have a little bit of firework recovery time, so no meeting on July 5. So just wanted to make that note for the public, and that's all I have for today.
All right, Commissioners' comments?
I would like to make an announcement.
Yes.
With redistricting at the state and congressional levels, the, we've been working with those maps, and so all voters will be getting a new notice of disposition card, which is your voter registration that will show who your current representatives are and where your polling place is. We did not change any polling places, but just so you know, everyone will be getting that. You don't have to do anything with it, you just, we'll let you know who your new representatives are, so.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, well, if we have no other announcements, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0.